What's going on, everybody? My name's Eric. This is Elmo City Agenda. We are here at Trailblazer Cafe over at Stinson. They have some awesome food. It smells so good. Haven't eaten yet. But I saw the, oh my gosh, she just opened up a cake right now. Are those peeps?
Yes.
Are those peeps on the cake? Can you, can you bring it over here to just to see? Oh, all right. Here, uh, can you put in the camera?
Get that. Uh, we can slide it back.
Let's see, turn it.
Closer to me, please.
Look at that, peeps. Oh my God, it looks so good. What is it?
It's a butter rum.
Oh, man. Okay. Well, I know what I'm having. All right. Um, so again, we are here at Trailblazer Cafe at Stinson. So come on by. We already have some people here eating some breakfast. So go ahead and come by, ask some questions, have some food and cake. If it's not gone by then. So Rosemary, thank you for tagging Brenda. Uh, she said, morning. Uh, glad to see everybody. Let's see here. All right. Just got everybody sharing. So how was your weekend?
Good. I am Erin Gallegos Reed and I'm running for District Three.
Yes.
And to serve on the city council. And so I spent my weekend block walking. So that's what we've been doing. It's been really great to get out and meet all the neighbors, hear their concerns. And I feel reassured because a lot of them are my concerns. So I really feel that if we partner together, that's the change that we're gonna get and it's gonna be a good one.
Nice. Sorry, I got, I got all discombobulated with it. Here's the cake.
It mesmerized me too when I walked in.
Butter rum? Come on, guys.
It was the frosting for me and all the Easter colors. It was like, oh.
Robert says cake looks amazing. Yep, it definitely does look really amazing.
That's Robert, my husband. That means that's a license for me to buy it. Yes, I will bring it home.
She's gonna bring, um, a quarter of the cake?
We're not gonna share. We need two pieces.
All right. So, uh, does he have an Empire logo on there?
Probably. He's a big Star Wars fan.
Star Wars fan? So you are a Star Wars family?
We are a Star Wars family. We have a guest room dedicated to Star Wars. We're looking at buying that twal rug.
No way. What's your favorite movie?
Um, oh, I guess the first one. As we were kids, like the very first one from the seventies.
The fourth one? Okay.
Fourth? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, yeah. Good. So I'm like, you know what? Looking back at The Phantom Menace wasn't that bad. It was, it was, but yeah, yeah.
Well, and I liked the offshoots. I liked Boba Fett. I was really into that when it was on Disney Plus.
Were you like happy that he came back?
Well, I didn't know that part because I'd only seen the first and then this. So my husband has brought me through the movies.
Okay.
But I do, yes, I think it's so cool that way. He can just lay there, regenerate and come back out. And then I was really into it because one of my grandmother used to watch, um, As the World Turns. And so as a child, I watched it with her and one of the characters is in Boba Fett. She's one of the like guards. So I was like, gosh, this woman done aged, but I do.
Hey, it's a, if Boba Fett can come back, anybody can come back.
Right.
But that's the other thing too. What bothers me is that they're de-masking all these people, like they're like taking off the helmet and like, it was, there was a sense of, you know.
Mystery.
Anonymity, or I don't know. I don't know how you say it, but yeah, um, just with that and, and there was one that's for me was like a Halo, uh, that was one of my things, but yeah, they're like taking off the helmets. I'm like, granted, we knew what he kinda looked like with Django Fett, but.
It's nice to think of them as immortal and unseen and.
Yeah, like this mysterious figure, you know, but oh well, we can't have it all, I guess. So, okay. Sorry, we got a little bit off topic. I, I'm gonna blame the cake, but why, how would you not, you know? Tell us about the district. District Three.
So District Three, I am a third generation District Three homeowner. So my grandparents, parents and I all lived there. I, uh, love my area, was born and raised there. I rode my bike up and down Walters to McCreeless Mall to the library, to the Dollar Movies. And now as an adult, I'm just a little disillusioned and very disappointed to see all how it's overrun by pollution from homeless encampments, stray dogs, lots of gunfire and shooting theft. A lot of my neighbors are being, uh, their cars, like they actually walk up to the cars. They're so involved and check the doors. So that's disappointing. And as a private citizen, I realized, hey, I have a voice and I can be heard because I'm a loud person. I'm a journalist and I'm a teacher. So you have to be loud when you have high school students. So, uh, with five other neighbors, we worked with Safe Officer Torres, who's the Highland Park Officer, Safe Officer. And he removed a homeless encampment of forty-five tents along West Ball between New Braunfels and Gevers. So, um, that really emboldened me to say, hey, look, we can make a change and it's just takes one person per street. Cause we're, those five of us are not neighbors next to each other. We're from every street on the block, pretty much. There's a few streets missing, but we're happy to have them join us. And for Steve's, where my husband and I live, there's a lot of street racing and it starts around nine oh four and we've called non-emergency over and over, but it doesn't stop. Well, Safe Officer Torres has been helping us to go through a speed study. And this is after several requests I made with the district and just got ignored. So we went straight to him and he's got it done. He put about two weeks ago, a speed radar in there, which is the first part of the study. So, and we're a school zone. So it's doubly concerning when they're flying through in the morning because forget the fact that I can't get out of my driveway. But there are six kids that walked on our block to J. Pitt Elementary and it's dangerous. I don't know that I'd have my kids walking if they were, if I knew how fast they were going, but some families have to do that. Like when I was a kid, we walked to the public bus stop and then got on the public bus to go to school. So, um, we need to make sure our community is safe for everyone, for the young children. And the biggest thing that we see in the morning too, are massive pit bulls that are just roaming free. So I, I was a victim of a dog attack. The three dogs got me. Thank God they only bit in my boot. They didn't bite through my leg. It was winter. So I think we need to, we're doing our neighborhood a disservice. When these, when these owners just let the dogs roam free, uh, one of them has a home and he, they literally opened the door. Cause if you drive past the house, the door's wide open. So especially after the tragic on the tragedy on the west side, we can't afford this to happen with children. And we, we need to do something. We need to have more ACS officers, more SAPD patrol, more code compliance officers. And this is something at our neighborhood association, we've talked about at length. And we learned recently this year in twenty twenty-three that there's only one animal care or animal control services work officer for District Three. District Three is the largest district in San Antonio. So that's disconcerting. And I believe that until they can hire a new person, we should be able to borrow someone from maybe District Ten, where there's no stray dogs, because I teach at Reagan and I've never seen stray dogs there. I even run over there because I don't have to worry about it. And, um, why can't he come help us until we clean it up for a few months? So just a bunch of different ideas for fixing the problem.
So with, with code compliance, there's been a lot of issues with code compliance. You know, giving out citations for like, you know, problem areas with, with grass and all that, but a lot of those times it's, it's seniors that don't have the means to do that. So what, what would you like to do to help combat them going after like seniors like?
Right. And so we need to protect our seniors and we need to serve our seniors, which is also one of the reasons I am running. What we need to do there is have nonprofits and have even children volunteer, adults volunteer to do their grass, cut the back where the alley is. But for when I say I'd like to see code compliance, it's for the people who are building like, I don't, they almost look like homeless encampments. Some of our neighbors have, um, built like a platform and then their canopy is on top of it. Then they go put aluminum walls. And so it's an additional unit in the backyard, but it's not an ADU. Cause I think ADUs are great and they're, they have their place in our community, but this is just a random makeshift building. It almost looks like the stuff that you see under the highways. So that kind of thing. And then they make noise all night. Some people have, um, several of my elderly neighbors have talked to me about that. And so that's what we're looking for. We're not looking to say, gotcha, your grass isn't cut. No, that's not what we need. We need to put an end to, hey, look, you're parking, blocking in the middle of the alley. Or you're parking on the street that you're taking up all this space. How is an EMS gonna get through? Stuff like that.
Gotcha. Um, so what, what is, what is something that you think would help with the, the, the houseless people, the houseless population?
So I, uh, with my church, when I attended TBC, we worked at a soup kitchen down by Hay Street Bridge. And a lot of the people I met were grifters. They were not from Texas. Um, and one woman we met was so, um, emboldened to say, well, I wouldn't leave because I get three hot meals a day. And I thought, whoa. But I really liked what, uh, he's a former governor of New Mexico, uh, Johnson said, and what he did over there. He, um, went, combined them all, had a, had a place for them to be and paid them daily to work for the city. So either they're, um, taking care of strays at a homeless, I mean, a, a dog shelter, humane center, cleaning up the streets, um, doing some type of activity that gives them purpose. And before they go do that, you wanna feed them, you wanna make sure they're clean, make sure, um, they feel good and that they feel dignified. Because we must have a compassionate response to them because they're humans just like us. And before we take that step, I believe that nonprofits and other citizens should go through and meet. Let's find out where the single parents are with the families. Let's get them off the streets immediately. Let's get the veterans off the streets immediately. And for those who are just passing through and, and refuse service, then we need to tell them, hey, look, this is not how it goes. If you look at the Texas penal code, you may not pitch a tent. And, and make that your primary shelter. That is illegal without express written consent of whomever owns the property. So we need to address that. And I do believe a lot of people come to San Antonio for this reason, because of our weather. It's conducive to being outside. We're not Chicago. We're not Minnesota. But I do believe they too can get help. And if it's something where, I know, um, my dad's girlfriend works at the SAM Shelter and they've got a lot of extra beds, but people don't wanna be off drugs to get in. And I think maybe we need to revisit that because there could be a shelter where it requires you to clean up to come in first. And then maybe there's one where you're in the middle of your, I don't know what you call it, being high, I've never done drugs, being high or your trip or whatever. But you genuinely want to come in. So maybe we take you and we let you go through your withdrawal in the safety of the shelter. And so then you can get cleaned and you can have some time to detox. And so I think everybody in that situation needs a fresh start. Whether it be a clean home, a job, money, food, or an, an opportunity to detox. Because I cannot imagine living as a homeless person. Uh, my husband and I this weekend went to Don Pedro and we saw a massive encampment underneath the drainage ditches by the Family Dollar. And I thought, that's not a life. Like, are you kidding me? And you know, your heart breaks for these people because some of them just don't have a way out. And I think that we need to step, step out and say, hey, look, come on, come with me. We're gonna take you here. We're not gonna decide, oh, you need to be clean or, oh, you, we want you to be clean. But we need to give you that opportunity first, because why would you wanna be clean, clear-headed and living under a ditch? That'd scare the heck out of you.
Right.
Why don't we help you out? Like if you haven't showered in days in this heat and the humidity, humidity right now is awful. Like, why? And it's, it's really sad. So that's what I'd like to do. I think we need a humane and compassionate response. And I think we need to look at the partners of our city and, and come to them and say, hey, listen, can we afford to split these floors maybe? Because you wanna keep the users away from the non-users, right? You don't want people relapsing easily. But I think there, there can be a solution that works for everyone.
Yeah. And, and you know, one thing I've heard from, from Haven for Hope is a lot of the people say it's hell in there.
Really?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know at what extent, you know, and I don't know if it's just those people that just say that because they don't wanna be there. Or it's legitimately just terrible in there. I don't know. Um, so I think there's those aspects that maybe a lot of us don't know what is actually going on in there, you know? And I, and I, there's people that have commented on here and said, it's the people that are in there and the staffs.
Whoa.
So, so there's, there's issues that maybe needs to be addressed. Um, cause Haven for Hope isn't this great organization as everybody says it is from, from what other people are saying. So maybe we need to look in at, do some accountability for that. Is there something that you would like to do?
Yes, I do believe that those entities who are partnered and whether they be nonprofits or church groups that are partnered with the city and receive funds from the city do absolutely need accountability for having their programs run in a dignified and compassionate way. Because those areas have to be clean. Like you're, you're saying, if people are commenting and saying those places are hell, then there's no incentive for them to get off the street.
Right.
Right? Because there's hell on the street too. But at least maybe they can find a pocket of the street that's for themselves only. And so I think it, the burden is on us, especially the policymakers to say, hey, look, we're gonna need to check and balance here because this can't be a place where people do not wanna come. This should be their safe space where they can get back off their feet.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, yeah, like I said, it's unfortunate that that's even happening, but coming up with a better solution, there's gotta be something else.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
What was that first step in your candidacy? Like, you're like, okay, I'm gonna run for office. What, what was going through your mind?
Well, it's something I've been thinking about for the last five to eight years. And so I originally came back to San Antonio and lived in Bolverde. And so during the pandemic, I was driving back and forth all the way, like forty-five minutes to see my family and my aunts, to bring them meat and toilet paper and all the things that were rationed and whatnot. Because I had better opportunity to find them over there or vice versa. And, um, I noticed the home prices keep going up and I thought, well, let me invest in my neighbors. See what's happening over there. And so I did. I purchased a home in twenty twenty and I've been there since. And, uh, in Bolverde, I lived in a beautiful neighborhood. Didn't know any of the neighbors. Nobody was interested in meeting a single female who was a teacher, like not, not even as a friend. And I'm not kidding. And I had my, and that's not what you think when you move to those expensive neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I ate fideaux and beans for weeks to get in there. And then I had a neighbor break into my house and nothing. I, I felt very unsafe and very, very violated. And so I came back to the southeast side thinking, well, let me see what I do here. And as soon as I moved into my house, neighbors all the way around me came up to say hello. I went to them. I have everyone's cell phone number on my block pretty much. We all know each other. We all look out for each other. And it's just a very different sense of community. And I love that about my neighborhood.
You know, oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Well, and it's like, everybody, you're like, oh, you live on Hammond? Oh, Michael Madre's sister lives over there. Oh, my dear, this, everybody knows somebody in District Three. And that, it feels like home. It feels, well, it is home.
Yeah.
But it feels, it makes San Antonio still keep that small town feeling that I loved when I was growing up.
Right. And I'll be honest with you. I live in District Ten. And yeah, I agree. I used to live on District Five. And yeah, I agree. Like it's, the, the people are more welcoming here. They're more like, like you said, like just, hey, you know, we wanna meet, yeah, over there. Yeah, it's for me, you know, and over there, no. I only know one neighbor and that's it. Like, wow, it's really, it's, it's like even the people that come over, like end up meeting them first. Then it's just, I'm like, I don't really, nobody's warm like that, you know? And it's just.
And there's a lot of transplants in that area too.
Yeah.
And so maybe that's just not their, what they're used to and it's not their comfort zone.
Right.
But for us, it is.
Yeah. And that's, that's, I do miss it, you know, but it's hard to get the house down here.
Now it is. It is very much. I'm shocked at some of the prices, but.
I, I'll be honest with you. I actually, we did look over here and they were all either fixer-uppers or ridiculously high. I'm like, oh, okay, well. What's your favorite small business in District, District Three?
Man, okay, so.
Besides Trailblazer Cafe?
Besides Trailblazer Cafe, the bunny cake, the coffee. I love Patty's and Nietzsche's. Those, I mean, if Patty's could stay open all day, like here's my plea. Please, at least till nine, so I can get dinner. Um, help me out. Um, and then sometimes, you know, post pandemic, my husband and I think we're healthy walking over there, eating, drinking Orychoata. And then we walk a block back and we're like, we're still full. But, um, and then Nietzsche's, we love Nietzsche's. I, I, let's see. What else do we go? We go to Bobby's. Bobby's is one of my favorites.
I haven't been there.
Oh, you need to go. Oh.
I keep hearing about that place.
So the food is just as delicious. It is different. The people are more, obviously they've updated a lot of it and the food is.
My friends own it. It's amazing.
I know the Garcia's, they went to the column, they're all coming for rats for kids. And, uh, the families from Bobby's, uh, I don't know in the column as well.
We also love Poetic. And that used to be in District Three, but they redrew the lines in October. So Poetic is a coffee shop. Love that place.
It sounds like a coffee shop.
That's where you'll usually find us. We used to always hit Taco Haven on Steve's, but then it closed down. So sad.
Wait, what?
Oh, it's closed down. It's somebody else bought it.
Oh, really?
I'm not sure who. I sure hope some food comes in there. Let this be my plea for Chinese food. It would be ideal to have some Chinese food down there.
Not Panda.
Oh, yeah. No, the line at Panda is ridiculous. You roll up after five and you're easily car fifteen. I'm like.
Well, there you go. That's, that's more need for Chinese.
Chinese.
So what is, what is your, how are you gonna prevent small businesses from getting hurt by construction that's going on right now?
That's happening a lot. And as a member of the city council, we need to be more on the offensive to protect our small businesses because they are the backbone of our economy and our city. And if you go through any San Antonio, a native San Antonio, we always prefer the local business before we do the chain. At least my husband and I certainly do. So I think we need to go to them first, have them at the table with the developers or with whatever the city planners are doing and say, hey, this is what we wanna do. This is gonna affect you for this many months. And then make sure there's an escrow account in there. Where they can say, hey, look, if you're not done by June fifteenth, these businesses are gonna be suffering and that's not what you agreed to initially. So now we need to make these funds available to them. So, yes, that too. And these, the construction projects that go on for days blows my mind because I, I mean, not days, but years.
Years, yeah.
I grew, I, I learned to drive in Dallas when I went to SMU. And those guys had HB Zachary doing their big flyovers on the highways. They were given incentives by the city to finish within a short amount, like huge incentives to finish in half the time. And they were working twenty-four seven and you know what? They did it. So why can't we do that? Why can't we incentivize them to finish projects faster? Let them work all night if they need to. And not, not the same worker, but it shifts. But I think it can be done. I saw it in Dallas and I thought, hey, this is not happening in San Antonio.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you, you also worry too. You're like, you also don't want them to sacrifice some craftsmanship too, that they're rushing. You know, that's, that's the other thing too. But, you know, hopefully it can get done. But that's the other thing that I think they brought up during this city council session. Where they were giving incentives, they wanted to give incentives to the company if they finished. Oh, they were gonna penalize the company if they, if they didn't finish by the certain time.
Maybe that's what it takes.
That was that. But then they were also saying, well, what if we finish early? You know, but it's like, well, there, I don't know, there should be incentive for that or not, because then you should just be doing the job, you know what I mean?
True. But unfortunately, people work on positive reinforcement. And you don't wanna penalize them because, you know, sometimes things are out of their hands. Like so in May, May is one of the worst times you wanna go into construction because we have those horrible hailstorms. So that could delay them forever.
Right.
But, um, yeah, I think incentivizing them to, to speed it along, but not at, for, you know, at the risk of ruining the quality.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, so what's your take on the CPS rate hike?
The CPS rate hike, my goodness, the one that they already passed, the three point two five percent, I was against that. I was very disappointed to see that they voted in that ad in because there's no accountability for checking the grid. So you raised our rates and then because of your negligence and misunderstanding of finances, you come back eight to nine months later and say, oh, we have a, we have forty million dollars left. What should we do? Well, it's ours. Give it back. What do you, what do you, what do you mean? What do I do? Like, that's not really a difficult question, I don't think. And the fact that even our, um, council person voted no to give it back. And I thought, goodness, we're a working class. We're seeing some of the highest inflation in food prices that we've ever seen, right? And now we've got CPS, which is our own public entity, our, our utility gouging us. And then shows you the mismanagement of the place when they say, oh, just kidding, here's forty mil. But no. Two million people have struggled for eight months to pay those bills. And now you wanna come back next year for more? When I'm on the council, absolutely not. Don't even ask me. No. Unless you can prove to me you have a group that has, and that has studied the grid and has said, we wanna fix this in phase one, phase two, phase three. Then okay. But then you wanna close down the coal plant? Come on. That, that's just not wisdom right now. I understand you wanna be green for a certain, by a certain time. But you can't run full speed ahead towards that when you already saw that we needed coal more than anything during winter storm Uri. So, yes, not for the rate hikes. And I'm very concerned about CPS as a public utility. You see how SARS is running things. How many times have they done it to us? They've never done that to us. They're, in fact, when I was watching the news a few months ago, SARS is looking to give money back. So it's a mismanagement of CPS. It's an, it's an unfortunate thing because that grid belongs to the state of Texas. And if that means we cut off ties to Pennsylvania and Nevada, whomever we're giving our power to, that's what it means. Because it's our grid.
Right. And again, if you guys have any questions, feel free to comment. Um, y'all sitting here, y'all could ask a question if you want.
Come on up.
Let's go. All right.
Okay.
Right here, the microphone's right here. Microphone's right there.
And let's see what you're eating over there.
I know. I'm like, hmm.
So I can know what to order.
And UT in seventy-three.
Nice.
Are you still teaching?
No, sir. I stopped teaching last year to run this campaign. Not during the, not during the year, the two years. No, sir.
What do you think about the role of money in politics in your, your?
Wow, that's a good question. My husband and I talk about this all the time. We were very disheartened to see how much, when speaking to different campaign managers and, uh, former politicians who were looking to advise me, and I was all told, you need at least twenty-five thousand dollars to run this campaign. You need fifteen thousand dollars to run this campaign. And I thought, you know, that's sick. Where does the money go? Because I'm also running on fiscal responsibility. So I think I'm doing my community a disservice if I go below twenty-five K just to get my name out there. We've got social media. We've got friends with big followers and big accounts. Those are who need to be pushing me, right? So I don't think that's right, because then you discourage the average Joe like me from jumping in and making a difference. And then you end up with these dynasty families that do nothing, 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 but hand it like your turn, buddy. And then it's her. Come on. Cause then you don't get change and then you get a swamp, right? We can't have a swamp in San Antonio. San Antonio for us.
Yeah. And honestly, to be honest, that's the whole reason why I started this show.
Awesome.
Is because when I ran for office, TPR said, we only interview if you have a campaign headquarters and you employ one person. And that's on their website too.
That's crazy. Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's not a thing. So that's, that's the whole reason why I started this, um, because it should be open to everybody.
Yes. Anyone who has an idea and a conviction and the belief that they can do it. Come on, why not? And I believe too, that just, it's just one person, one house, one block. And if we all band together, looking out for each other, we're gonna have a change.
Right. I have one that's.
Yes, sir.
Your top priority while in office? I, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear the, what you were talking about earlier.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, what is your top priority while in, in, in office?
My top priority in office is public safety. We need, yes, sir. We need more ACS patrol, more San Antonio police patrol and more code compliance officers for District Three.
So safety, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And what do you know about UNESCO and the missions? And what do you know about UNESCO and the missions?
UNESCO and the missions, um, they've taken over, uh, given us a status, a world heritage site status, which protects our missions if, God forbid, anything destructive happens. And I think that it's mandatory that we, the residents and the city, start offering some kind of incentives to the homes that are along there. Otherwise, we cannot keep the tourist dollars, business dollars in District Three. We should ask, be asking Frost Bank, which is a local bank, we should be asking HEB for loans to help them even cut their grass. I'm not saying, hey, let's go bulldoze it and gentrify it. No, we need to partner with those people who live along Confluence Park. Like, I have friends out of, from Connecticut come and visit and they were like, are you sure? We're stopping. I'm like, girl, please, I, we're good. I'm, I'm from here. We can stop here. But the thing is, if she didn't have me, she wouldn't have stopped there. And then she wouldn't have eaten in the restaurant across the street. And these are the mom and pop restaurants that we need to help, right? They need the tourist money. And then my friend, um, went to Churchill, we worked together. And she said her brother, who we grew up with, um, paid a hundred dollars for a bike tour, I thought. But then he went to go eat at the Riverwalk. I'm like, why? Why didn't you go to Nietzsche's? It's right across.
Or that, that is exactly.
Oh, that's, that line's too long, dude.
Yes, my dad, my dad, the late Roberto Angianno, was a grassroots activist. Very serious, but willing and dealing behind the scenes. Hello. Anyway, um, he passed in two thousand seventeen, and that was one of the key things he'd always bring up. He helped, he along with a handful of people, started the, uh, the nonprofit for, I, I think it's Espada. They had no infrastructure there. So they had to get a nonprofit to start up, to get grant money, to get infrastructure now because they were all with septic tanks and right there outside of Fort Yan. Uh, the other thing that, uh, he was real involved with is when they were thinking about building more apartments where the, the Mission Marquise is at.
Oh, right.
And he's like, no, we need a library for this neighborhood, this community. Because my dad grew up on the West Side, Zaza Mora and Martin Street. Grew up poor. I remember the house that my grandmother lived in. It was like, literally like the Beverly Hillbillies little shack. It was. And years, a few years later, once her sons grew old, you know, were older and could help, she was able to qualify to build a nice little home right next to it. So people thought my dad was from this area because he was so involved. I mean, and so with that property, he, uh, bond money, we need bond money, we need bond money, we got the library. And then I guess they realized like, hey, people are coming here. I think it's like one of the highest visited.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Satellite libraries we have in town. Then the city started investing money in the Marquee, and look at that venue out there, it's beautiful. And then my dad was like, okay, we need a YMCA. We need a YMCA, so there he is, you know, knocking on doors. If they wouldn't take his appointment on the phone, my dad would literally sit outside the door of the city council person. And I don't know who was when at that time. But finally, we got the bond money for the YMCA. And they said, well, we'll only pay half.
Oh, geez.
So then, of course, Harvey Najin is phenomenal for donating and supporting youth programs. Very humble man, ran into him one time at a restaurant, and I didn't want to bother him, but I just had to thank him for what he did for our community. And he was very nice and very polite and very just humble and just quiet man. He was like, thank you. I said, you know, my dad, before he passed in two thousand seventeen of cancer, I was able to take him in his wheelchair to the grand opening at the YMCA. The library eventually named the meeting rooms, they contacted him after Roberto Angianno meeting rooms at the Mission Library after my dad.
Wow, that's amazing.
He sat on the SARS board for eight or nine years. My dad was a very simple, humble man, but very aware of everything going on. So people would always come to my dad, who are you going to support? He would never say. He would never say.
Sounds like that kind of person.
Interviewing everybody, getting his input, have those conversations with you when he'd see them, but he would never say who he was supporting.
That's fair. My grandmother was that way.
Yes.
We never knew who she voted for.
So I, I thank you for all that, you know, that about what we're trying to do here in the community, going back to the taxes. That was one of the things before he passed. Why is it that we can't keep our tourists here? Why can't we get a portion of the tax money? That the tax, the hotels and all that, they have that tax money that they have, visitors' tax or whatever it is. Why can't we get a portion of it here in the missions to help our communities, our small businesses and communities?
That's good.
You know, the king of Spain, well, not the real king, but whoever it was that came to visit for the Canary Islands, they came down, Roosevelt, can you imagine? It's like coming down to missions and royalty is coming down here and seeing what we have. But yet we talk about Military City USA, World Heritage, the only World Heritage site, uh, site in Texas.
That's right.
So anyway, the tax thing that you were talking about, yes, small businesses and especially need to benefit from that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that's, that's, the thing is, there's been so many investments in, in, like, the hotel. Like, now they had to take over the Hyatt because.
Because they didn't even do it.
Yeah, they couldn't even pay it off. And so now the city had to.
And here we are, they're building another one.
Right.
And that's going to block the view of the tower. And don't let that block District Three's view because I will be loud and mad about that. I love the tower.
Uh, what are your thoughts on the utility disconnections? I think we kind of touched on it a little bit, but.
Did we? Well, as far as.
Like, just how that should be handled?
I think that's hard to say because I have heard stories of, I don't know if it's an individual or a small business that had a ten thousand dollar CPS bill, but then CPS doesn't turn off their power. So we need to find out who it is, right? Not us, the general public.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The CPS should find out who it is. And I, I don't, I think that's where you go and you put those solar panels right away. Because we're going to hit the sunniest part, our drought season coming up, and try to offer them some relief because by allowing them to continue to dig a hole, I can't have a ten thousand dollar bill right now. Are you kidding me? I don't know who could, not even a small business. Um, that's almost negligent on their part. It's almost enabling this family to, or this company, who's probably run by several families, get into this huge debt. That's, that's not right.
Yeah, yeah.
And what kind of relief will they offer?
Exactly. Yeah, for sure. God, y'all, it tastes, smells so good.
You should have ate between shows.
It smells so good.
And our, and our guests here are taunting us with their food.
I was like, yeah, it smells so good. Um, David asks, uh, what, what's your stance on Prop A?
I do not support Prop A for several reasons. First, as a public school teacher for fifteen years, I am a defender of children. And this Proposition A will allow voyeurism to get off with just a slap on the wrist. Now, what is that? It's basically a peeping tom. The person can watch you go to the bathroom, put, come right up and look in your windows with just a slap on the hand, a citation, and they're let go. That cannot happen, especially in District Three. We have so many beautiful parks, the missions, people where they're out and about and kids go run to the bathroom. Um, we can't have that. We also, I do not agree with their creation of the Justice Director. We already have this position. It's called the District Attorney. Whether you agree with him or not, then vote him or someone else in. Then I also, I, I, I feel like there's a lot of deception that came with packaging six different issues into one proposition. And I think the safest thing to do right now is vote no and take it back to the drawing table and separate it. If people really want to see the issue separated, that's the most fair and honest thing to do. And then you'll hear the citizens' response per issue because it's like saying, well, you can have it all or nothing. Nobody likes that. And plus, they work for us. They should have thought about us. So for the three council members who walked out and did not vote, that, that took some guts because some of the issues on there have already been decided by the state. And if you understand the charter of the city, that's, for them to overstep like that and come against what the state has said, that's an overreach of power. You cannot do that. And why, why are we wasting so much time on these social issues that they cannot affect change? Why aren't we talking about taxes? Why aren't we talking about CPS? What, I mean, we're, it's almost like a waste of time. It's these other issues, peripheral issues. Baseball stadiums and, oh my goodness, just so many other things.
Yeah. Well, and, yeah, and baseball stadium has nothing to do with the prop, but, I, you know, I, I agree. It's, it's, I've never been a fan for multiple issue bills. You know, I applaud, I applaud that they're actually trying to do something, but like you said, it, it's just.
Should have been separate.
There, there needs to be a separation. Um, I mean, it's just.
Because they knew they couldn't pass some without the other, so you just lump it all together.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult. So, you know, and we'll actually be talking to Danny Diaz next week, uh, on his opposition to Prop A. Uh, so that'll be an interesting conversation as well.
Well, and they talk so much about Prop A with chokeholds and with no knock warrants. I mean, SAPD in the newspaper came out, twenty fourteen, they stopped doing this. So this is a moot point.
Gotcha. Yes, go ahead. David asked, also, how will you represent, oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You know that District Three is, uh, going to have our police station finally?
Yes.
And we're told that nobody knows really where it's supposed to be, planned to be. But now the police department is involved with that as well and helping decide where they believe it should be. So what do you feel about that, about where such a sta, uh, station should be?
So I believe they should in, like, invite the public to come and be a part of this, at least to hear our voices. Even if it's just a lip service thing on their part, it would be appreciated.
No, you know, that we should even, it should be, like, they should, like.
Get our feedback.
Don't forget about the lip service. It shouldn't even be about that anymore. I think we're way past the lip service. It needs to be, hey, this is what we want, this is what we elected you guys for, this is where our tax spending money is going.
Well, and Chief McManus came out two months ago to the McCreeless Library to talk with us about his new plan for curbing crime. So at the time, we were told it would be about another six years in the works to get this, because they need to find the location first. But I think in that time, you can have Citizens United decide, to say, hey, this is what we want, and we keep pushing it forward. This is what we want. This is where we think it should be. And with his new plan, they're taking in lots of data about the twenty, I believe it's twenty-eight hotspots around the city that have the most crime. I mean, I'm sure quite a few of them are on the southeast side, so it, it begs to have the place near that. Unless they clean up that area and move it somewhere else, but we're the only area that's not served in District Three. We've got way over on the east side and then way on the south side. So, um, there's plenty of locations I've heard from neighbors of where they'd like to see it. But yes, I think southeast is absolutely underserved as far as substations go.
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, David asks, how will you represent District Three? From this current councilwoman, she is not visible and it's hard to get a hold of. And it seems she and her sister have done nothing for the district.
Well, David, thank you for your question, and that's actually why I'm running, because we kept getting ignored. And I will be accessible to my residents and to my neighbors because I need to hear from you in order to do the job well. If I don't know, if I don't hear from a neighbor in Via Coronado, how will I know what's going on? I live in Highland Park. I plan to stay in the district my entire life. And I have, even on my push cards that I'm handing out as I go knocking on doors, have my cell phone number, and they also have my email. Because it's important to have that dialogue. It's like saying to your boss, hey, I'm turning my phone off and I'm going to check in my email. You can't do that. The people, the residents voted you in, you have to respond. That's how I see it.
Yeah.
I need to be accessible. And honestly, if you see me out, my husband and I always eat out in District Three, you'll see us. And you can come up to the table and plus, all my aunts, uncles, cousins, my parents, my childhood friends, my neighbors, all live in D3. So you could easily go up to them and be like, what's with your sister? I mean, I don't know, I mean, checks and balances, right? You know, however, you got to have it.
Yeah.
I also want to have office hours at my office where residents can come in and ha, see me face to face for in fifteen minute sessions so we can get as many people as we in, we can in. And I think this should be held after hours because a lot of people don't get off work till four or five. They have to go home and feed their kids, feed themselves. So I think it behooves me to stay there till seven, seven thirty, and then I can go to a restaurant in Citi Base.
Yeah, definitely.
Exactly. And that's what I was saying, you know, instead of seeing you at all these social events, I'd rather see our representative having social events at our small businesses. You've got Brewster's, you've got this place, you've got, why do you have these big, you know, banquets and stuff like that at a hundred fifty a person? They can't afford to go to that, you know? Have it somewhere we can have like potluck or something.
I haven't been invited to those.
To the neighborhoods.
Me either.
Well, seen those people.
Kind of neighborhood association meetings and have a potluck for the community and spend your money there instead of spending it on these elaborate galas and whatever, where these small business people can't afford to go.
Yeah, I agree. Um, yeah, definitely. Yeah, representation matters.
It does. Visibility, accessibility.
Right. So, and, and that's something that, uh, if you don't see people come onto this show, I did try to reach out, but they just chose either not to or, you know, or conflicts. But it, it just, it's just one of those things that, um, it's unfortunate when you don't get people to, to reach back out, at least to say, hey, sorry, no, or, you know what I mean? But.
And he was very flexible. He, I, what did we talk about, three weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's just.
He made it easy to, for me to visit.
Yeah. And, and it's, if you're not, to me, if you're not accessible to just at least one person, a meeting, a meeting, like, should, it means you're not going to be accessible to the public, you know what I mean? All right, so we're going to wrap it up.
Okay.
What, what's on your playlist?
Oh, on my playlist? So my husband would say it's schizophrenic. So I listen to Christian rock and roll.
Okay.
So, um, right now, and I even brought my phone through to check it out.
Oh, yes.
So I am lazy now. Um, I have moved to Samsung, which is quite complicated, by the way. Um, but praise the Lord, my husband got me Spotify. So I just have a like list. So I have Hail on here from My Epic.
Oh, okay.
And then I've got In The Club because, I mean, can't be on Instagram without that. And it's not the fifty cent version, it's like the Tariq version.
I was like, all right.
So, no, no, it's not that one either. And then, well, they don't give me the option. And then I've got Snap Your Fingers, you remember that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got Broken Heart by Falling Up, Forever Hollow from Confessions of a Traitor, and then I got Jodeci.
Uh, Jodeci, alright.
Cause I'm that nineties kid. Uh, then I've got Honey in the Rock, which is a praise and worship song. Make It Last, which is like two thousand one grunge, Stroke Nine.
Okay.
Down, beautiful, Flicker Stick is a local Dallas band I used to listen to in college. So, that's my list. It's kind of all over the place. If you go far enough, you'll see, oh, some Russian music. Let's see. Easy Come, Easy Go, got to have that on there.
Yeah.
So.
I got, I got a, uh, Let It Go on mine.
From Frozen?
From Frozen.
Yeah, when I taught. I taught pre-k and they would hear like the first few chords and it was silent. And I was like, it's magic.
But you can't hear me when I asked you to come here.
Right. No, but you heard those chords and you were like, it's almost like the Pied Piper when they used to play it. And then, you know what? And I, what year was that? Fourteen when I was teaching pre-k? And then all the way to like AS seventeen, when I was teaching third and fourth grade, those kids were like, oh, that's my song. Okay, let's play that.
Awesome. Uh, tell people how to get ahold of you, uh, and, uh, Block Walk and.
Yes, we de, I definitely need Block Walk volunteers. We go, every day, my husband and I, we go for two hours in the afternoon, two hours in the evening. And then Saturdays, Sundays, we go for four hour block, blocks, blocks of time. So my email address is electerin.gaiagosread@gmail.com. My cell phone number is two ten nine six zero zero five two zero. And I should put the disclaimer that I turn it off after four, but I answer it every day between ten and four. So, um, I also have Cash App, if you're not available to Block Walk and want to help, uh, pay for signs. A lot of my signs are getting torn down throughout District Three and it's very disheartening. And I don't know why, but, um, I hired someone professional to put them up and they're very secure. And then you, you look at them and then they're gone in a few days. So, uh, we need to get the word out just door to door, and I hope that my District Three neighbors will help me do that because I want to serve you, I want to clean up our neighborhood, and I want to have all of us working together, one home, one block at a time.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it for coming out. Um, uh, Peggy says, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Um, David says, come out to South, Southern Ranch?
Oh, yes, I need to go out there. Oh, David Bernal, probably.
Yeah, he said, how can I get a sign? So.
Oh, yes. I'm happy to take you a sign.
Yeah. So, thank you. Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it.
Thanks for listening.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for joining, and this is Almost the Agenda. Tune in here. In a couple minutes, we're going to have one, another interview. Oh, yes, yes, go ahead. Oh, yes.
She wants to bomb us, okay.
Thank you for, oh.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All three of us? And then we're going to order cake.
Yes.
Peeps cakes.
Alright, see y'all later.
Thank you.